There's a sign machine going around. Okay, anyway, so we're calling this meeting to order here. This is three of us present. And I know Martina's not going to be here. Denise, I think, is gonna be there. I don't know if I can. Item number three is considered and accepted in government. It's from January eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments, questions, corrections?
These are from on eighteen you're talking about, correct?
Yeah, this was the primarily the Good Energy presentation, which Jasmine and I have both liked too. I came in after she did. Don't have comments or questions? No? Okay, all in favor? Okay, item number, the next item is minutes of February tw- February eighth.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Corrections? No?
I, I, I'm just going through them. I, maybe I just missed them going through. But I'm pretty sure the town accountant came up during that meeting as well, right? We were talking about the firm. I remember that coming up at some point, and I just didn't see that reflected in the minutes.
Which, for the, for the eighth meeting?
Um, for, yeah, the two eight. I specifically remember bringing them up.
It was a treasure collector that was discussed because I was there during that meeting.
Okay, so we did talk about the tran- yeah, I've got the treasurer transfer here, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, let me just.
Oh, this is great.
Uh, are you talking about the insurance transfer?
Yeah, the number, number ten.
Number ten.
Number ten.
Number ten. Okay, yep, no, that's fine. That's fine, what else?
Okay, so we're, we're doing the February eighth minutes.
Yeah, I was in here, right? The one wasn't here?
Uh, yeah, okay, okay.
I was reading like, oh.
Okay.
That's when you were away.
Does look like, okay. Yeah, that was when you said.
That's when I wanted to be virtually.
Yeah, that's when we could, could send it.
I would've been, I would've done it.
Sorry about that. Um, so anyway, uh, all those in favor? And abstained? Okay. Okay, item number five, discuss the TM's appointment of Christine Russell to town accountant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I guess, is that you, Adrian?
Yes, um, so, um, we posted the position internally for ten days and we had a couple candidates interested in the role. And after interviewing our candidates, uh, the panel consisted of myself, uh, Ms. Fineoise, uh, the, the, our, uh, former town manager.
Right.
Uh, Nor, um, and we also included Joanne in, in the interview. And after, uh, the panel reviewed all the candidates, uh, we decided that we would like to offer the position, uh, to Ms. Russell.
Just, just to, um, I'm not gonna ask any detail about the other applicants, but what made Ms. Russell stand out compared to the other applicants?
Absolutely. So Ms. Russell has an accounting background. She also has a bachelor's degree. Uh, her former position, she was, uh, as you can see on her resume, on her resume, she was a staff accountant. And she's been in her former, in her current position for sixteen months. Uh, Mrs. Fineoise can, can speak of, um, you know, the skill sets, uh, of, um, Mrs. Russell's skill sets, and she's worked directly with her. Um, she was, uh, or is, her succession plan, she's been training Mrs. Russell to, um, you know, fill her, her position and when she was planning to retire, although it happened earlier than we wanted to unfortunately. But, um, we'd like to, to add.
Well, yes, Christine's been working with me for, like you said, for sixteen months. She's a, she's a very hard worker, very dedicated to her job. And, um, I think she's learned a lot over the last sixteen months. She came from private industry, so Munis' school's a little bit different. Um, she's working on her certification for the town accountant. She was in the, in the role as the assistant. So this will be her second year that she's going to the school. And, um, we just felt that she was, she's very capable of doing the job. Obviously, there's some, you know, there's some things that she's gonna have to, to, um, to learn along the way 'cause we didn't really have a chance to go through, like, everything, the whole year's worth of, you know, what we do when. But, uh, she's very capable of learning, um, she should be very enthusiastic about it, and I think she'll be a, um, she'll be an asset that we can keep her here with the town.
Um, what is, um, so is the plan still in the long term possibly for the financial direct, finance director position to be attached on to, uh, or stipend to be attached to her position?
So currently, the, the strategy is to keep the director of finance with the town manager until we can evaluate the performance for the new treasurer collector and, and the town accountant. Then one of them can, can take that, that role later on, once we determine who, you know, who would be the best fit to take on those duties and responsibilities.
And how close is, um, are you, Ms. Russell, to completing your, um, treasurer collector training?
Well, it's the accounting training.
The accounting training, excuse me.
Um, I'm in my second year, um, of training, which, um, I was full in March. And then my third year of training would be next March, and then I would go, and my fourth year would be when I go to the certification classes, and when that's when I would take my exam for the certification.
Okay. Okay.
So when I was looking at this, I guess, we didn't see what the job description, I didn't see the job description in our packet. I did ask for today, unfortunately, probably too late from Hannah. So, nothing against it, but just curious, you know, because what, were there, did we have criteria originally? Like, being certified, or, you know, you're trying, it's four years before certification. What does that leave us open? Are there things that if you're not certified that you can't sign off on, or?
One question.
You know, I mean, where does that leave us when we don't have certification, or does it? I figured, I'm glad you have your care.
Yes, yes, I could. Um, no, it's, it's a designation that, um, you know, the, the accountants association puts out there. And actually, when, when I was first hired, I didn't have the certification. And I wasn't even sure whether I was, I was going to go for it, but I figured that I would, you know, it's a, it's a good thing to have, you know, most of the department heads have their certification in there. So there's nothing that she can't sign, that she can't do. It doesn't put us in any, um, you know, in any detrimental position or anything like that. Um, but it does take some time to, to get that done, you know, to get through the process like that, especially her being a new, um, you know, new to the role and still learning the different aspects of the position. And when it comes to the, um, the job description, a couple of things that we pulled out of there, I believe, is just anything that related to the finance director. That would be the, um, you know, the budget formulation, forecasts, things like that. Um, but most, most of it, most of the job description remains with the town accountant. That, that was the big bulk of it.
Are we gonna, are we gonna see, um, like, a free-floating job description for finance director at some point?
Well, no, I think as Adriana pointed out, usually it's attached either with the treasurer collector, the accountant, or the assessor, you know, somebody within the, within the finance. I think just at this point, because Christine is still learning the duties of the town accountant job, you know, she's not ready yet for the finance director. We still have an opening for treasurer collector, which we're trying to, to fill. Um, so I think at this point, we mentioned it to the interim town manager, and he said that he would act, at least for now during, like, budget season, he would act as the finance director.
Yeah.
And then when, when the town was ready to determine what to do at that point, we can move forward.
Um, is there a plan in place, um, I know the interim, uh, town manager just got here, but is there sort of, uh, conversations that have taken place, sort of like a plan to develop some of those skills as, you know, as we're looking at other people doing the finance director pieces, what are, what is the plan, you know, to develop, um, Kristen and anyone else that comes in?
So, if, if I may, uh, so we, we are sending Christine, uh, to a professional development class or, I wanna say conference, um, in the fall. Um, it's part of a leadership program, so she will be attending that. Um, it's in my budget, so when you see it, please approve it. Um, and, uh, for the treasurer collector, if we have someone that we've interviewed and she accepts the position, we would like to keep, uh, Joanne. She, she may stay on with us for an extra, you know, month or so, uh, so that she can train and, um, have that transition period needed. Uh, but we would certainly offer the same professional development opportunity to that person as well.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Kind of jumping off that, um, I know it's standard for most, um, industries where if you're training, you don't start off at the full salary, right? 'Cause she's not certified yet, so is there, could be a plan in place to reach to that, um, salary that would be appropriate for a certified collector?
That, that, that's a great question, um, Counselor Ryan. We, uh, so we actually, we, we actually do. So the first year she will, uh, she'll start at a lower rate, and, uh, and then her second year, um, she will bump her up. And then the third year, once she acquires that certification and she has three years of experience in her background, then we, she would start at step one.
Okay.
So that's correct, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to, thank you.
Thanks for asking the question, 'cause that was, that's, that was sort of where I was agreeing to, you know, like, what's about the.
Yeah, 'cause it's standard.
'Cause there's not, again, no, no numbers.
That's a great question.
Yeah. Well, it's important that the people know how much we're, or not how much, but how that's working. Because if you're not hiring somebody that's got all the qualifications per se, um, that's always a, always a good question.
If I can follow up on that, then if, um, if, I may, I don't know who cares to answer this question, but, um, so what kinds of issues do you foresee, especially with going, us, us going into the budget cycle, um, that you think you'll be able, that you'll be able to do and things that you'll need help for?
So, um, with the budgets.
Yeah.
Karen has had me send out the memos, formulate the emails, so I'm getting all of the responses from the department heads. So she's been having me, um, put the data together from the department heads. Um, and she, before she leaves tomorrow, will be going through all the department information, going under review for it. So, um, she started preemptively having me go through the information.
Okay.
As a predecessor for that. So I've been fielding questions, and if there was a question I could answer on behalf of the department, then I would go to Karen, get the answers, and then, as, kind of like my training.
Right.
For questions on that. So I've been actually able to resolve a couple of questions where I was unsure of, but then as I was to successfully answer those questions just from, from learning and asking Karen appropriate questions.
Okay. And give, with your background, um, in private sector, uh, finance, how do you foresee, what do you foresee the biggest differences going from billing budget from that sector to billing a budget in the public sector?
Well, with the private sector, we didn't have to build a budget.
Okay.
So it was quite different, um, from the companies that I came from. We, we just had to watch our spending. Obviously, when, when it comes to purchasing, you're analyzing costs, going with the, the better pricing, um, just suppliers. You're comparing stables, budget, well, you're seeing who would give the best price, and you're going with the best vendor as far as pricing. You're not gonna spend, you know, a hundred dollars on something you can get from fifty dollars for another vendor.
Sure, sure.
So it's more or less market shopping.
Okay.
How familiar are you with Munis system? Because we've been transitioning over to that, um, KBS.
Yeah.
So.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna answer for you, but I just, she is one of the go-to people for Munis. She is a guru and Munis. I've certainly asked her for help, um, and, um, and Excel. She is a genius in Excel. She's, she has, she's sharp with those skills.
That's good, then.
So in my prior experience, I was the point of sale, I managed our point of sale company, well, the point of sales database for the company I came from, so I was hands in the database. So I just kind of transitioned that skill set to Karen Munis. So I just kind of transitioned it. So anybody, anytime somebody was having an issue or reaching out with questions, I just kind of put my hands into our Munis software and figured it out. More or less, if I could figure it out, I would, I would go to the knowledge base system where I can find the help files, figure it out. If I couldn't figure it out, then I was opening a case to figure it out.
Okay, that's good. Mike?
Uh, through you, Counselor Chair. So you mentioned that she would be starting at a lower scale salary, you know? Could you tell us about that?
Absolutely, eighty thousand dollars, and then year two, eighty-five. And then year three is, it's in the higher nineties because then she'll be at step one.
Right?
Um, just, just 'cause I'm, I'm trying to do the cost analysis in my head, um, how much is the professional development that we're spending?
I think it's seven hundred and fifty dollars was the, the whole entire program. I would have to, around seven hundred and fifty dollars.
That's fine.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Morning.
I have a question. Um, is there anything to keep the person, after we're paying for all this certification? Um, I, I know you're, you can make whatever, like, decisions you want, but what's the guarantee that you're not gonna be like, okay, I'm outta here, I got my certification? I'm not, I'm not saying you will.
So in her current position, she's still, she's still getting that certification, so if she wanted to leave tomorrow, we've already invested money. We're not really investing any additional money for her certification. So she, she will still, she doesn't need that certification, but she's still enjoying it because she aspires to be with the town of Southbridge for a long time. She wants to retire from here. She owns a home in Southbridge. She's a Southbridge resident, and she would, she would like her career to be here. At least that's what she's expressed to, you know, to all of us.
And if I could just add to that, if you look at my resume, it speaks longevity in my previous employers. My personal was eleven years, only working in four different, um, positions, moving up through the ranks while I was employed. My past employer, the employer I came from prior to here was nine years. I only found unemployment because they had to close their doors during, due to changes within the industry that forced them to close the doors. There wasn't, I didn't leave because I wanted to, I left because I had a choice.
A lot of people do that, unfortunately.
And then I'm just to go off, and, um, on your resume, the junior staff accountant position was for the same company as the commission analyst?
Correct. And I was also the point of sale. I managed the point of sale company for that company as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Counselor Steve, is that correct?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanna let, you know, I, I know I won't be here in the office after tomorrow, but, you know, I have been working with Christine for a while.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm very happy that she's interested in advancing in the position. You know, and I did tell her that I would be, you know, there to support her in whatever way, you know. I have a lot of knowledge from over the years, and, um, you know, I'll still be available to her through email, phone conversations, or whatever, you know, to help guide her along. I wish I had a little bit more time to groom her, but unfortunately, you know, the way it goes. But, you know, I'll be there to support her the best I can, too.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Rachel?
Got a question, just a comment. Christine's been awesome to work with. I've been here a year, and she's good last week, so I'm happy that she came up for this, and I would consider it.
Okay. Anybody else? Your motion?
I made the, we opened the motion.
Good. Any last comments?
A second.
Oh, no, we opened the discussion, yeah.
Can you say I'm open to, I'm like.
I'm like, no, no, no.
Is that second motion?
No, no, I'm, we opened the discussion with the motion.
Yeah, sometimes it does.
Yeah.
I'm trying to do that, 'cause that's the proper way you're supposed to do it.
Technically, yeah, but, sort of, anyway.
Ends up with subject.
Some of those does, yeah. So anyway, um, any last comments? Yeah, all those in favor? Okay. Okay. So we will send it up to the full council, and you'll probably get approved.
Christine will be.
More likely. More likely. Um, okay, item number six is discuss and review a transfer of eight thousand dollars from seasonal salaries to special services to cover the cost of vendor mailing to all vacant types of these properties. And is that, uh, is that yours? It's, that's yours, okay.
So.
I'll move to approve. I recommend to council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, then.
Oh, sorry. Um, this year, the vendor sent out all, to all vacant. We don't do that every year, only because there's just so many and it's so cost prohibitive. But we hadn't done it in a few years, so we sent out to all vacant residents, and that's why there was a price increase. So I'm just looking for a transfer.
How many do we have? How many vacant properties do you have offhand?
There is a lot of vacant properties right now. I don't know the exact, 'cause we're still working on. We are getting a lot that we've sent to current residents that are actually responding, so that's, that's.
So somebody thought were vacant were, actually weren't.
Excuse me?
So somebody thought were vacant actually aren't.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And I assume you, you're referring to the census, right?
Yes, that's right.
Mike, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Through you, we did send census out with that, so I would think that you would be entitled to some reimbursement on that side of it as well.
Oh, from the boarding hall?
Right, 'cause we did have a grant for that.
That makes sense. That's a good point.
I, I'll check with the image, how much. Thank you.
I would say at least that, actually.
I know that they are paying, they, they did pay a portion for the folding and the printing of the people who are listed up. I'll share.
Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, good to know that. Jasmine?
Um, what was the time, through you, what was the timeline for, um, the census?
Should we turn it? There is no really timeline. We just fill it out, and we usually get the ball to that within a month. So we, we're getting them, hopefully.
Thanks.
And were those all sent out?
Yes, we all sent out between January.
I'm sorry. I saw. So for anyone that didn't receive them, so they were all sent out in January?
Yeah.
Anyone didn't receive them, do they just contact?
You can call us.
Mm-hmm.
Update them, be a phone.
Thank you.
So you were saying there's an increased cost, well, there's more and all that, but do we go out? The eight thousand dollars for these, for this mailing, it's, the mailing is done by a vendor?
Yes.
And so how often do we check on pricing for other vendors? Like, do we just say, oh, it's eight thousand dollars more, sure, here you go, or is there, like, I mean?
No, we've, we've used different vendors. This one has been the cheapest running so far.
Okay. But, so, and I'm just thinking of this number seems really high, you know, so for some mailings. How can you get that many more mailings? That's eight thousand dollars worth of mailing. I don't know, what is?
Because she's, I mean, I, I, if I got it, this is not something they do every single year. This is something they decided to do after a couple of years to make sure they had accurate numbers, which, why there was an increase, correct?
Correct.
Okay. George?
Seems like a lot of money. Is this, when you say the mailing, the, the cost of the company doing the mailing, or the mailings themselves, like postage?
Postage?
So.
That's a lot of postage.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to do the math on them. Trying to figure out what the actual costs are on this, this thing. I don't understand how, so what's, if this is in addition, what was the cost of the mailings in general, like?
The whole thing, which, for the forms, the mailing, the albums, and fifteen thousand.
Okay. And, but you need another eight, for the eights in the fifteen?
Right, 'cause I didn't, I didn't budget for fifteen thousand.
Okay, all right, so you, all right, so, okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the numbers, that's all. 'Cause I mean, eight doesn't seem like much money in this budget that we have in this community, but what does that mean, that's all?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, okay.
And this money, is it, includes the printing of the, of, let's say, excise tax bills and things like that?
That's not mine, I don't know what.
This is just the census mailing, right?
Yes.
Because with the excise tax, for instance, I don't know who does the printing, if it's us, if it's us in-house.
Mm-hmm.
But the treasurer is still showing Sharon.
Ashley.
Ashley.
That's true.
He's still showing that, and that's in, I questioned that to the manager, you know, six months ago, and it was gonna look into it, and was still showing, to contact her.
That's true.
Yeah, like, we use a vendor for that, for the printing of bills, is a vendor?
Do you wanna respond right to us?
Uh, it was actually brought to our attention today, so, not by the town manager.
No.
The treasurer actually noticed, um, and brought it to my attention. I'm actually sending an email out. Uh, we don't have a treasurer, so I didn't, you know, I don't even know who I should put down. Um, we're kind of in an influx.
Yeah, that's true, right.
Joanne's gonna be transitioning to somebody else.
Yeah.
So it will be addressed, um, but it was not, we don't get proofs, Kelly and Ryan, it's in their database.
Yep.
And for some reason with excise, we get proofs on all the bills except for excise.
Yep.
So that's why we didn't catch it. Nobody brought it to our attention. Um, until today, it was noticed.
No, probably not.
I don't, I didn't know the difference.
It's a computer file that Kelly and Ryan accesses from the registry of motor vehicles and plugs it in. But when you open it, it's all dot, 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 zero, you know what I mean? It's all this computer gibberish. You can't read because it's translated, their software to print the bill.
That makes sense.
So you wouldn't, unless we tell them, hey, this treasurer collector, and it's copied from one, and it has to be sent to the registry of motor vehicles.
Right.
To say, this is our new treasurer collector. It can't, it's, it's captured from the registry.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, I believe, anyway.
Okay, that, yeah, so that, that makes sense, unfortunately.
Circle back to this.
Right.
I mean, I get, we gotta pay a bill. I just don't get that the bill is more than doubled since the last one, regardless of vacant properties. I, I just don't see how. With, I mean, maybe we do need to make sure that if we're not gonna do it, but every few years, then the vendor needs to be, we need to go out to get a price on it before we do it. 'Cause if this was a surprise, that, that, that the price was more than anticipated, this much more than anticipated, then we're not quite doing our forecast well on that. So, I don't know if it's because the vendor just went up on money, or because, I don't know, we couldn't have had terrible census issues.
Do we have, how many vacancies, um, how, do you remember vacancies dramatically increase compared to the last time you did this?
Yes.
By how, do you know roughly?
I, I don't know exactly how many, but, I mean, I know the price of everything has gone up too, so.
Right.
Sure.
You know. Right, but that's what I'm saying, so I think in, in light of that, we should just be more mindful, or somebody should be more, you know, however that works, to decide on who's doing our, if the ma, you know, if this is all cost of the mailing itself, of the, whoever does the mailing plus the, which includes the postage and all that, it went up more than double since the last one. If we go out and ask, then, you know, like, just saying, I guess I've been in too many of these meetings where we talk about, did we get quotes from other people, and if we didn't, okay, we take care of this stuff, but just be mindful to make sure we're doing it the next time, or something. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, I know.
You know, so I'm not blaming, like, a blame thing, I'm just, I'm bringing to the attention that this was a.
Right.
This doesn't make sense, that's all. I know we have to pay it, it just doesn't make sense.
Maddie, how often do we actually change contractors for this?
Uh, we've, you've been using this one for two or three censuses, and then previous to that, we used to use, um, another company. And then we've used another company prior to that.
So you change every, every few years?
Since I've been here, we've probably used three or four.
Yeah, it's, okay.
Just, just weird.
And how much of this increase was posted itself, and how much of it was printing and other services that the company provides?
I don't have the, I didn't bring the bill, I can use it in the, in my house, but. We did a lot of mailing, either.
Yeah.
Could you, um, forward the bill to the entire council?
Okay.
Yeah, that way we have that information.
Yeah, I understand.
And maybe the citizens of the subcommittee as well, so that way they have it.
How, in past years with this company, how, have the incre, has, have they increased the price and how large of an increase?
Some of the prices have increased. She's been the most fair of all vendors that we've used, um, recently, so. But it did, it did go up. And also, like, the cost of streetless books have gone up drastically. So we've cut down on ordering them. We used to order closer to two hundred, we only order a hundred now, sometimes even less.
Yeah, how many people actually pick them up?
Yeah, they.
Yeah, how many people actually buy them?
This, we sold out. We sold out like two months, so.
Everybody loves an OZI books.
Actually lost it, I know. I put it on swap, yeah.
Are they really? Wow.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions to come? All those in favor? Okay, item number seven, discuss and review new voting equipment, the image cast, print suit, cab, tabulators.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Maddie?
This is just a formality, um, per MGL. This is just a formality, um, per MGL that we have to, the board, the town council has to vote to discontinue using the machines that we have used in the past and use the new ones, and then I have to let the state know.
Are there any differences between the old machines and these new ones?
Technology, they've gone, they're, um, most voters won't realize the change because they're similar, but they're faster, they're more accurate, there are just a lot more technology to them. This is the newest approved machine online right now.
When was the last time we had this replaced, the tabulations?
We replaced them in two thousand and four.
It's about that.
And the only reason why we're leaning toward replacing it is they don't make the ones that we have now anymore. So they're just hardening them. They park them, try to fix them, so. And the funds were used through ARCA.
Okay, well, yeah, I remember that. Okay. Are there any, any particular changes regarding, um, like ballot security in these machines?
Security?
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're more secure. The state, um, has approved them. There's only two machines that they've approved through the state, um, and we received RFPs for both, and this one came in ten thousand dollars less than other vendor.
Was there much, I mean, it came in less, but was there much difference in the machinery? I mean, you're saying, so there were two types that they approved? Two different, but they weren't the, it wasn't like the same machine from two different vendors, it was two different?
Two different machines.
Right, so, and you evaluated the quality of, of each one to decide?
Yes, this one's faster, faster than the other machine, and after speaking to people that have this machine, they like this machine.
Okay, the reviews, yeah.
It's the newest one.
And less money, that's good.
And less money.
But sometimes, you know, as we talk, less money isn't always the best thing, but in this case it sounds right.
Does the state provide, does the state provide sort of like their formula of how they determined that these?
They may, but I don't know, they, they just, um, evaluate the machines and then they approve them, certify them. We are, we're told that's what trumps the PPA.
I know, sometimes voters are interested in, in information about the voting machines, I'm just curious.
Well, yeah, I mean, especially more concerned, I think, with, especially with like the touchscreen, which I don't, I, this is.
This is a tabulation machine, not an actual voting machine.
Which is good, because I don't think, I don't think touchscreen's illegal in message transmission.
No.
Anybody else have comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, just ask that you read it in full so people who are watching actually know what it was, because you only read like a certain percentage before we took a motion on it. So if you could read it before we actually take the vote, so people at home know what this is. They may not have that on the screen or in front of them like we do.
Well, the motion is, so are we, anybody else have other questions? Okay, in this case, it's, I'm going.
The vendors are going to come here and offer training just for me when I bring the machine, and then we're going to have, um, training for all the election workers, and then I plan on getting cable access to do a program to show the voters the new machines.
Oh, okay.
And hopefully it should, it should align.
That's fancy, I love it.
We're going to interview the machine? I, I like it. That'll probably get a lot of praise. Seriously.
English, Spanish, and machine language.
There you go. We'll have to do it, yeah, we'll have to definitely make sure it's, uh.
It'll be in code.
Right, exactly. Okay, so anyway, um, so, you know, we're voting on discuss, reviewing and purchasing the image cast precinct tabulators and discontinuing. Huh?
No, this is, no, no.
He's reading it because he didn't ever really read it. It's a recommendation to council.
And discontinuing the use of the old voting equipment, beginning with local elections, like, come on, brain, scheduled for June thirteenth of this year. The vote is according to Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? No problem. Item number eight, discuss and potentially take any action on the concept of centralizing town billing. We're coming back to this issue. And onto either an in-house department or an outside contractor. We, I talked about, I talked to the town manager briefly about this before dinner, and he was, he was actually thinking that it might be a little premature to do this. Especially considering his, his concerns are about looking at the idea of that if we were to do it as a town tax system, which is not, which is actually what the Trash Committee is talking about at this point. But if we were to do it that way, it would be less, he thinks it would be, it could be simply presented as being a lot less expensive than going out for individual contractors, which it would be. And then that, and then wrapping it into the taxes would therefore not necessarily, wouldn't make it necessary to do extra billing. However, if we're talking about doing an enterprise fund, or if we're talking about doing anything that involves some form of pay-as-you throw, there will be some billing involved. Pay, well, pay-as-you throw would, would be buying either stickers or bags, and one of the other versions would require some sort of bill, so we're still in the middle there.
So, Mr. Chair, once again, so the, the item is the concept of centralizing town billing into either in-house department or an outside contractor.
Right.
I knew what you were talking about. I think you all know what he's talking about, but the general public, that didn't make any, central town billing could be anything. We're specifically talking about the implementation of a new trash system.
It's actually a combination of things, because that would, because that brought up the issues of the fact that, and I, and I was talking to, as I said, I was talking to the manager at this point, about, and he was expressing some concerns about the fact that we already do the, that we do the billing in the assessor's office, and it really shouldn't be there.
Right.
Um, so he was talking about wanting to look at that gen, that issue in general anyway.
Right.
And trying to figure out where it actually should be.
Right, but when you brought up the enterprise fund situation, all that is specific to the concept with the trash situation that.
That is.
We're potentially having an enterprise fund, like a water and sewer one, but for trash, for those who haven't been paying attention, in case they're watching right now, that's all I'm saying. So if you do it as an enterprise fund, all funds go into that only for the purpose of taking care of whatever it is, trash, and the administration cost of doing that, for instance, another bill or another helper or whatever, as we've talked about. So I just wanted to kind of, you know, know where this was coming from a little bit, is the fact as to whether we can add it to the water and sewer type billing, to the tax type billing, or that it has to be on its own type billing, you know, so that's kind of where, and I can understand the town manager saying, or maybe cart before the horse on some levels, because you have to kind of decide on what, what, what that's having. We already have billing, we have some billing, and maybe that's a bigger, broader subject everybody's building, but now.
Which is kind of, kind of why we're doing it all at the same time.
Right, because if you're going to get new software that can do all of it together, like a lot of communities do all over the country, because I've seen those bills where it's utility bill, it's got water, sewer, trash, whatever, then yes, obviously what's best for that community as a whole. So I just wanted to, it kind of start, like, if I were just, I wouldn't know what you're talking about, so I'm just, was trying to help a little bit. Thank you.
You're right, absolutely, you're right, okay. So we've got probably a few hands going up, so.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree with the manager. I think this is a little premature, specifically on, I think this, I, I actually think Citizen Member Clements is right. I think this is kind of two separate issues combined into one. I think we need to have a long-term discussion about what is going to be, and what, what system are we going to do with trash and how that building is going to be handled, and then there's a separate discussion to be had of like, okay, overall, how do we want to improve the billing of this town? And we, I mean, it's a little premature specifically because we're talking about appointing a new treasurer, right? I, I would like to have her input and her thoughts about the process instead of, I mean, we all can talk, we all have some knowledge base, but we're not experts in this. And I think if we're going to talk about having centralized billing for the entire town, we need to have the appropriate department heads here to have that discussion, to talk about how that logistically could work, if they have suggestions, and then we also need to have a separate discussion about what's going to be the billing for the trash. And if they tie together, wonderful. If they don't, though, I think we need to start them off as two, because I think there is a concern that maybe this isn't the most transparent, when you're looking at the agenda of like, okay, what exactly are we talking about? There is that confusion of like, is this more specific, or is this more broad and general? I think it's a combination of the two, which is why I think it needs to be separated out. Until we figure out what the long-term plan is going to be for the centralized billing.
Ricky?
So, I agree, it is premature. It's definitely difficult to discuss this, where we don't know where we're heading, for sure. I, I get that one hundred percent. For us, the frustration is that decisions aren't being made, and there is a lot of play, whether we do billing, whether we're going to have a two and a half, one ride, there's like so much planning that needs to be done, and I feel like decisions are so far away, and we have till, what, March of twenty-four? I'm getting nervous that we're going to be able to make this happen, in terms of anything, if decisions don't start happening with the Trash Committee and get it to council.
Absolutely.
Honestly, so that we can plan, because there's so many little details to plan and implement, regardless of where the bill is, if it's, you know, whether it's built in-house, whether it's not built, whether it's tapped, I mean, decisions need to be made so we can move forward, um, just with our in-house, never mind toilers and trucks and whatever else we're going to get.
Well, the toilers are not, are not a real issue because we have them.
We have trucks, I think we have to order.
If, if we were to, if, we're not talking about doing it as a town provided service, we're talking about, we're talking about having a, an outside contractor do the service. They would take care of, they would take care of that.
They don't know much about.
That'd be a huge undertaking, I think this town would have to do.
Oh, we, we probably can't afford to do that.
So just time is of the essence.
Oh, it is.
If we are building it, you know, done at the building, billing this in-house, wherever it's housed, that is a huge thing to build, task, get running, um, so like, decisions need to be made, so, you know, we can start planning. It's just, it's a big task, and me trying to assess, I know nothing of billing. I don't come from a billing background. It's going to be all on Francine, which is why I asked her to come to these meetings. Um, so it's huge, it's huge.
Well, I'm sure, are we going to be getting an update soon from the Trash as to, I know they're doing a survey. I imagine that those surveys are almost in, if not completely in, so we should have a final tabulation, so that way the council can make an informed decision about what the public wants going forward, correct? I don't want to speak for Councilor Categorius Committee, but I'm.
Through Councilor Steve, committee is meeting. We have been getting surveys that on the residence lot, but we are waiting for the RFP to come back, so we have an accurate cost. Once we get that, we will know exactly how much it's going to cost and what, have a better idea of what it's going to cost the residents for a month.
Do we have an estimated date in which we're supposed to get that RFP back?
Right now, it's supposed to come back by the end of March, I think.
I actually talked to the manager about that issue too, and he said that, that they were, that the RFP, that they should be actually vetting the RFP, I think it was next week.
Can't hear you.
I think he said, I think he said, that, that, I think he said they should be vetting the RFP responses. They're supposed to be holding a meeting on the RFP responses for the people who are, who are putting in RFP, um, putting in, I think they're doing a meeting with the people, the contractors who are responding to the RFP, I think it's next week.
So they already respond?
So.
We don't know the end date that they have to respond by?
I don't remember what it was offhand.
It was end of March, it was about, initially it was told to us.
Because they can't, so they can't do anything unless it's past the end date, because that's when you.
If it's posted for the end of March, it's posted for the end of March. We have to give everybody the equal opportunity to apply and submit their proposals.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
But I don't know that the RFP had gone out yet, because didn't Annie say that it was, that was what the vendor who's building the RFP recommended? So my understanding was it wasn't finalized that date yet.
I, I think, the manager mentioned that they posted it on COMBIs within like the last day or two.
So maybe something's changed, so does that mean?
And that they specifically sent it out to, to known contractors, and then they posted it for anybody else who might want to see it, so.
Can we get a copy of that forwarded to the entire council, the RFP?
Um, we can, yeah, because we did get a copy of it at the Trash Committee, so.
Can I continue, please?
Huh? What did you say?
Could I continue? So, like I said, we're awaiting on the RFP to get an actual cost. We do have some estimates. The estimate it's going to cost us anywhere from one point six million to one point eight million a year. But that doesn't really answer the question of billing. The lady from, from Mass DEP, recycling coordinator, she thought it was a good idea that we have a discussion about billing, how are we going to bill for this? Rachel came to one of our meetings and said that she is swamped with billing now, and so she would, she thought maybe it would be a good idea either to hire someone, an extra person, or create a central billing. And the point of the central billing wasn't just to do garbage, it was also to do other things, such as like parking tickets and taxes and all kinds of other billing. I have here an email from Hannah that says the RFP was issued on two seventeen, pre-proposal two twenty-eight, proposals are due three nine.
Right.
Proposals reviewed three twenty-three, contract awarded on April fourth. So that's the information that I've gotten from her.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yeah, that, that, that twenty-eighth meeting is the one that I referred to manager, so.
So, like I said, we're waiting on Hannah meeting an accurate number. Meanwhile, thought it was a good idea to get a head start on what we want to do for billing.
Exactly.
Private billing company or in-house billing, I, my own opinion, it would be cheaper to do it in-house or to hire someone. That's all, thank you.
Could we get all the department heads in which this affects at a meeting to have this discussion again? You know, I, I think you're absolutely right, I think that's a fair point, but I think it's important that we have all the department heads here to talk about what that's going to look like. Again, I, I feel like we're having this discussion with ourselves, and it's great, but unless we have the expert opinions, it's really hard to base our decisions and what we want to do off of just honestly pure conjecture at this point.
So, I mean, it's, it's premature in one sense that we don't have any data to go by. It's, it's not premature to say, well, if it's going to be a tax situation, it's a tax bill, it's included in the tax bill, so there it is. If, and if it's a, if it's a utility situation, that's an add-on to something like a water and sewer situation. Having, I would not call a meeting of everybody to also just talk in circles because nobody has any data. I think the request needs to be from, it should probably be coming with the Trash Committee as well, to people that are, you know, who are the people that would be involved, and they need to, they would be the ones to give their best by, by doing a little research, you know, by, by asking out there in terms of central billing, non-such, you know, they would know who, other communities that do central billing, they would know other communities who outsource a lot of, they would know the agencies that you outsource to, and they could come prepared to a meeting with some, something. Not, don't just call a meeting and say, we're going to talk about this. Call a meeting, but the TM or somebody has to direct them to bring some data with them. I mean, for, you, you, I think you should.
I already did, I'm sorry.
I, you know, but I'm just saying, those are some of the things, you know, when you think, when you pick that little list of like, to do, to do, to do kind of thing, those would be things to bring data with them, to bring their, not just their, their conjecture now, but actual data of some sense, because to have a meeting, to have to have another meeting, to have to have another meeting.
That's why I felt it would be more appropriate to have that discussion after we have that RFP done. Once we have that information, once the people have had that discussion, and I still think it'd be prudent to have them here, so that way we can ask questions, have some insight. I, I just think we need to do, we need to speed up our due diligence, but we need to do our due diligence, it needs to get done.
I don't think we should wait till that RFP comes into some of those things that I just said. Those are really basic things. You know how many times people have said stuff at a meeting, you just make some phone calls, you just, it's very easy to get at least a broad picture of what's being done out there. I mean, when I brought in a bill from, you know, Marshfield on, oh, there's sewer, there, there trash is right on their water sewer bill, or I know my dad's from Florida before it was right, you just bring, oh, look, see, somebody does it, so it does exist, but people who work in that field can know where to look more than what we know or anybody else. So I, I don't think you wait till four, four to find out what the number, we know the approximate numbers, we know, the question is, how do you bill? Doesn't matter whether it's one point four, one point eight, how do you bill it? And if you bill it in a tax situation, it's got to be easier than probably.
Well, we got to know which model they're even recommending, which they haven't recommended yet.
I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, we are.
Which they're waiting for the RFP.
Those are the two main components. It's either going to be something that is going in the general fund, or it's going to be something that's in probably an enterprise fund, that's going to be a separate bill situation. We kind of know that, you know, those two, at least two things. So I don't think it's going to be a bag.
I do feel like we had this conversation and that we did ask for data.
Yeah, we did, we did at the last meeting, yeah.
Oh, and so that's what I expected to hear today?
Yeah, and I expected a little bit more people here too to. Yeah, and I expected a little bit more people here too to discuss it, no offense to people that have come, I'm glad they're here, but.
I have under the same impression.
Well, with no direction from the top, then you don't, you know what I mean? You just change the TM, unfortunately, no direction from the top.
That's true, that's part of the problem. Uh, we've got a couple people here, so, George?
The main agenda, at least the way I viewed it, was that you were gonna have a discussion of centralized billing to include maybe trash, parking tickets, and whatever we do for billing.
That was the plan, yeah.
Looking at the charter briefly, as far as I, I look at it, it's a reorganization or the establishment of a new department, and that falls on the responsibility of the town manager. And that town manager makes that proposal to council, and council's discussion is either accept it or deny it. They can't deviate from that proposal that the manager set forth, am I correct in saying that?
You are, but this is lacking.
But we can have the discussion for him to have, to make his recommendation on, because if he looks at the councils, says this is the will of the council, he can come up with a proposal, reorganization proposal, for us to talk about. We're not going without our, out of our bounds, actually, this is our, this is well within our bounds.
This is already billing within a department.
I'm just curious, it says a plan subject to applicable laws in terms of this charter.
Yes, very clear.
Reorganize.
Or abolish it, yeah.
Consolidate or abolish any town agency under his authority.
Absolutely, yeah.
Such reorganization plan may not be amended by the town council, but shall either be approved or disapproved in the form as submitted.
But we haven't even gotten the plan yet, we're just talking about it, so he hasn't submitted one for us to.
We're trying, we're trying to suggest, we're trying to figure out what we need.
This isn't a reorg plan.
So the manager can, if we decide that that's what we want to do, then the manager would craft how it would look and then bring it back to us.
Right, if you're gonna establish a billing, central billing department, that's, comes under, it's establishment of the department.
That's different, right, but that's not what we're saying is going to happen, we're just asking what the difference is between centralized billing, or not, or just adding it on to what we already do, which is billing by tax.
Or contracting it out.
And he could listen to this meeting and make a recommendation on his own, and that's the recommendation we either vote yes or no on. It's, we're well within our bounds to have that discussion and say, maybe it'd be in the best interests of the town to have a centralized billing, and if the manager goes, I wanna make a reorganization plan that goes with it and presented to council.
I'm not saying that you don't have the authority to discuss it, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying, when you talk about being premature, is it premature to wait for the town manager to come in on your discussions, and then he can come forward with a, a plan of action?
Because the, the trash people need to know.
Yeah.
The Trash Committee needs to know which direction, it's, it's not.
I got the interns out for the rest of the week too, so he's gonna be following this on video too, so he couldn't physically be here.
Right, right, but, and, and, a, a, a good town manager is, when they're looking at a reorg or anything else, which we've had done, we had, we had the, what you wanna call it downstairs, when we had board health and inspections and all that, that was a complete reorg. That was like taking two departments, changing them, that's a reorg. Changing an entire, as we've talked about, configuration of people and how the hierarchies and all that, that's a reorg. Those are the things that a TM is gonna, he's not gonna do something blindly, or she, any DM, is not gonna do it blindly and come back and say, hey, by the way, I thought we should do it this way. They're gonna be already listening to why things are not working or working a different way. And then, yes, it's an up or down vote, council doesn't have the right at a meeting to amend what that TM presents. If the TM says it's gonna have, you know, a, a director and a vice director and a whatever, but, they can't say, well, we think you should do this, we're gonna amend it, they can't, they have to say yes or no. Now, they could come back, a TM could come back with a whole nother reorg plan for the same department, yes or no? You know, a TM's gonna work with their, with the will of the people, so to speak, hopefully the majority of people. Yeah, it's, you're right, the, the charter is very clear about reorgs, but this isn't, we're not even there yet. This is, this is the TM, like you said, watching and saying, oh, what's, what's Trash Committee talking about? What's, you know, so, yeah, it's a good poll though, George, for making sure that we stick to charter.
Absolutely, absolutely. Mike?
Mr. Chairman, through you, according to the, I agree with Counselor Clemens and Counselor Shenier, but according to the State D S L, the Department of, not DLS, Department of Local Services, it's up to the Finance Department and a Department Head to come up with a cost analysis, including billing. It's not up to the Trash Committee. We don't have that ability really to come up with a plan for cost for billing. All, our only charge was to come up with how we want to, what mechanism do we want to come up with to pay for a curbside garbage collection? That's all, so the Finance Department and a Department Head need to come up, and I agree, they need to come up with an overall cost analysis, including billing on trash pickup. All right?
Right, exactly. So, that's, that's kind of the issue, that's why there's so many different things, so many different pieces still flying around at this point.
I don't think this is a waste of time, we've already come up with some good suggestions here, so.
Richard?
What I would love to see happen, because just to expedite things, is come up with an action plan. Francine has already done a tremendous, she spent all week making phone calls, calling other communities, she's got a whole presentation spreadsheet of information she has been asking for.
That's what we're looking for, that's what we're looking for.
I would appreciate it, man, with, with.
So, she prepared and talked and tell you whatever she found, um, you know, so we've played on here.
Yeah, can you, can you forward that to the entire council too, so we have copies of it?
Well, I have fifteen copies that I made for everybody here.
Yay!
Yay! I knew it was perfect.
That's why I said it, and she goes on, I always talk to her, it's like, right, right, yeah. I looked at her.
Mine is the only colored copy, so, you know, just clear that. So, I, I.
Yeah, that's how I was trying to get, come on.
So, I think from this, we can come up with an action plan of what additional info to be needed.
Karen and Christine left, and that's.
I thought they were gonna be here.
Yeah, I saw them walking away with bucks.
We don't automatically get upgrades to the Munis stuff?
So, do you mind if I sit up there, because I have a hard time.
You should.
Yeah, I can't, I have to get down. Christine, very repeat, because I can't.
Yeah.
Um, so, the first page, of course, is our town logo. The second page is the goal of this presentation, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit, that's right, is to discuss the creation of a central billing department, this is how I started. Um, the new department would process billing for water, sewer, fire protection, cross connections, which I already do, with data and documentation received from the DPW Director, the water and sewer departments respectively, which I have to say, Steve Gregoire, Water Department, Robin, Jim Merchant from the Sewer Department, my kudos to all of you guys, thank you. So, um, you know, they, we do have some communication, uh, software issues, you know, between stuff, but, so, the new department would presumably, in the future, process billing for, as Mr. Shenier said, curbside collection program, possibly inventory of toters, which I found that this past week, illegal dumping fees and lean fees, because I talked with the treasurer collector, it has to be leaned if it's not paid. MS four drainage program, which is coming in the near future after trash or before, because.
That's why, one of the, is why we have to have this conversation, because that's another issue that's coming in.
Yeah, and that's another big nut to crack, as the trainers call it. So, twenty-one D tickets received from the police department and the airport monthly billing, rentals for hangars and rental lease agreements. So, the other issue that was not talked about at the Trash Committee is the abatement application process. No, for the curbside program, as I said in my meeting, suppose, the meeting, suppose I posted the wrong account, some department head has to have authority to say to me, no, this is wrong, they applied for an abatement, you know, it shouldn't be a commercial property, it should be residential, you got the wrong account, whatever the deal.
Right.
Okay, um, so, he, that, that, because I, if the billing person is doing the posting, they can't be the authority to grant or deny the abatement, okay? So, the second page is a screenshot of the problem with our software. So, which is highlighted, and I explain on the next page, if you flip it, the current version of Munis is no longer supported. Upgrade which Victor, the IT person, is working on it. So, the version two thousand nineteen versus two thousand twenty-one is necessary.
It, it's not automatic, we pay for this service, and it's not an automatic upgrade?
Nope.
No?
That's freaking ridiculous.
Huge amount of money too.
We just, we paid so much money for them to do this, to convert all of our software, and they can't even continually update it? We have a contract with this company.
Yeah, that's really between you guys and the town manager. I can't, I just need it upgraded, you know? So, the, the two modules, Tyler Cashier and Munis, are not, there is evidence that it's not communicating effectively. And I will explain, so. Munis utility billing payment distribution is not in compliance with Mass law, per the Treasurer presently. No, it's not. This is the priority for me to fix. Munis utility billing is not processing payments correctly, or the same, the same as Tyler Cashier. After some research, which I prefaced this, I created a ticket, two of them to begin, to begin with, both tickets to support, people say, it's not possible, you have to pay extra. I found it in the system where the mistake was made. So, they, Tyler Cashier or Tyler Support, do not know that there's a Mass law that says you need to pay interest and fees as top priority. When we converted, I went to the conversion spreadsheet, and I can see them labeled as payment, I see in here on the first bullet, um, after some research, on the second line is payments levels one and two, the payment distributions are levels one through nine in utility billing. So, we are not using one through nine, we are only using one and two. So, it is taking, in Tyler Cashier, it's processing it correctly, then the collectors in Munis, it's not processing, it's taking it and moving it around. So, the tax collectors now have to run a weekly report, and run what's called the payment redistribution, and redistribute the, the payments correctly. They say, they, as the second bullet says, each week the tax collector's office runs a process called payment redistribution. Tyler Support states that this is a known issue, and it is in development. Does Tyler Tech know that within Massachusetts law, interest and demand fees must be paid first as priority? This slide was reviewed by Treasurer Joanne Stebbin, I can't say her last name, we just reviewed it today, because we've been around and, you know, I said, I need more clarity as to what is this process? Okay, so, based on.
That's blatantly unfair.
Right.
That you pay the interest first, that's completely unfair to taxpayers.
That's what, thank you.
But the idea that you have to pay the interest first is completely unfair to taxpayers.
Yeah, that's state.
It's blatant, yeah.
Fortunately.
Must have been written by the bank.
Right, so, you take, take a credit card, it's eighteen percent interest, what do they grab first? The interest.
With a personal loan.
Right, same thing, yep, you pay your interest first, and your fee. So, at this point, I've gone through, I've created a spreadsheet, you know, copied the, like, two spreadsheets, and I've changed the payment method on the spreadsheet only, had Joanne review it, made sense, we made some tweaks because of trash, because we gotta put trash before water and sewer, because water can be shut off, thereby shutting off sewer, so it gives us recourse. The only thing in the law is about interest and the fees, such as demand fee, lean fee, um, a final calculation fee, if there is one, I don't know, replacement of meter fee, you know, all these miscellaneous fees have to be paid ahead of the principal charges, okay? So, if we flip to the next page, so that's, and the thing is, I had done these spreadsheets, I have not tested it, I have not talked to anybody knowledgeable in Tyler Tech, because it has to be booked for me to be able to fix these, because they're, uh, which I say in the next page, the next slide, training from Munis.
Tyler for years now? Haven't we been having problems with Tyler, training people for years now?
Yes.
We need to get rid of them.
Yeah, so.
Is there anybody else who does this?
No, not for utility billing, I haven't found one town in my research, I have, they use other software for utility billing.
Gee, surprise.
So, the next page, right, says training, Munis utility module was quoted eight sixteen twenty-two. When Rachel first started, we got a quote, the quote was, has expired, as it was for six months. So, a new quote has to be obtained. The present billing staff person needs to have training booked with experienced Tyler staff regarding the following issues, to correct the payment distribution setup on over four hundred AR codes. I have to go this year and go back to at least to, to two thousand seventeen when it was, we, we built it in twenty-one, but we had to go back. It has to have a, because we had beginning balances from the old system, so it, it couldn't, it wouldn't recognize it, so. So, mine did this year, two thousand twenty-three, I have seventy-eight codes to fix, and then I have to go back each year and fix all of them. And then, everybody has to get out and go back in, and then they could see it, hopefully.
So, you've gotta fix seventy-eight codes every year, and you've got four hundred codes to work with all the time.
From two thousand seventeen forward, I have three hundred ninety-seven codes in the system I have to fix, with the help of Tyler Support. So, I don't wanna go and fix these codes, then it not work, and then have to set them all back. I need to talk to Tyler, you know, to the, the people that I dealt with before. So, the testing for both curbside program and later testing for MS four requirement is why I need this training. The Tyler staff that Francine has worked with, with the UB conversion were Helmet Mayer and Kimberly Young. Those are the two people I'm gonna go to, which I mentioned in a previous meeting, um, because everyone I have touched or talked to, other than these two folks, have not been helpful. Okay, so, they are very big in testing, which is what I want to do, I don't wanna fix our live environment and be wrong. I need to be in test, and, and I need to be in test in Munis, Munis the current, two thousand twenty-one, really. But if we're in nineteen, it is, at least I can do some kinda testing, and then be able to get into Tyler Cashier and completely. Right now, I only have access to municipal, you know, miscellaneous charges. The previous person I spoke to said that won't work, you need to be all encompassed in both, in order for us to test it with you. So, unfortunately. So, the work order, some good news, the work order module in Munis, Munis may be helpful, would be helpful for the proposed billing department and for a facilities maintenance department, if proposed later on. This module is currently used by the school department, school maintenance department, which I left a voicemail for the person in charge today, to see if I could talk to how it's working and what's good, what's not. So, the next slide.
He's on the Trash Committee, so, conveniently, he's on the Trash Committee, so that's a good thing.
Sorry?
I said, he's on the Trash Committee.
Right, who is? Mike. Oh, I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't put the name together.
It's not Mike, it's not Mike Colón.
Mike?
Mark. Mark, okay, Mark O'Ty.
Yes, okay. Okay, all I keep hearing in the, the committee meeting was Mark, but. So, the location, this was the most informative for me, well, other than this, because it gave me some positive feedback, but, the location of centralized billing, I called several towns, I've called others, but these are the only ones that responded, so, or, came back with my questions, Framingham DPW, in other words, their centralized billing department is in the DPW, under the DPW umbrella. Wester DPW bills, water and sewer, there are five employees in billing. Of course, over five thousand, five hundred thousand accounts, broken into three billing cycles, so just talk to the guys, right? So, no, we're not getting that far. Sturbridge moved, recently, to my knowledge, moved it from Finance to DPW. Now, I go online, and it still says it's under Finance, but they haven't updated their website, because they don't have a Finance billing clerk. So, how can they do billing for water and sewer? Lemister, I had a lengthy conversation, I didn't update my notes, I'm sorry. So, Salisbury.
Wait, you had a lengthy conversation?
Yeah, but what would they say?
So, Lemister, basically, yeah, I don't wanna say what the guy really said to me.
Okay, so just clean it up.
Because there was an opening there, basically. So, anyhow, there isn't anymore, but, Lemister, of course, is like Wester, it's a big city.
Yeah.
Um, they, she, maybe I'm mixing up, she, the person, there were like three departments I talked to, one of which is a new Health Director that has been promoted, which after our conversation, I was kinda saying, maybe you need, because she didn't know what an RFQ was, but she knew all about recycling, trash disposal, their transfer station, could pull it off the top of her head, which I've got it in my packet. So, for the Trash Committee, I've got like three things from different towns, of how they do it, transfer station, all that. And she's willing to talk to us, and I'm saying, well, maybe we could talk to you about trash, and you could talk to the Health Department about your tenant landlord relationships, you know, so, you know what I mean, like, one hand could wash the other for experience, because she's kinda looking for a mentor on the other flip side of the Health Department.
So, clarify then, so where, where do they do their centralized billing?
Uh, DPW.
That's what we're talking about.
DPW.
That's what I wanted, yeah.
Right, which is really water and sewer and the MS four.
Okay.
And they are also, there are three towns, um, I'm going to mix up the towns, that's the problem. Uh, the one guy I got off the phone with today is trying, they're trying to work out how to add stuff to their billing department and get it converted into their software because this department has this software, that department has this software, it's done by different, you know? So it's not seamless at this point, they're trying to figure it out and would love to hear from us if we figure it out. So, that's, yeah, so anyhow. We had a long.
Letters in cut form.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
More phone calls.
So Salisbury, there was a recording of the town manager online on YouTube that affected July one, twenty twenty-two, they were converting their water sewer billing department. Was created and housed at D P W. Three thousand accounts for water billing was monthly, now it's being quarterly. They did like us twenty years ago, they bought their water department assets.
Okay.
They had that company do their water and sewer, water billing for years. Their fees have gone up and up and up, so they said, now we're going to do it in-house. They hired a water department manager, an assistant, they're billing it in-house, they're having some computer issues. But like anything else, by now they figured, they've, you know, like asking the pay, the taxpayers to be aware, to be patient and all that. Um, so Holden Mass, which I talked to at a like a billing meeting before, has centralized billing within the municipal like department. Which is, which this department has a director all on its own.
Yep.
Planning approves, the planning department, it should say department, approves the abatement applications for trash billing. That is up for, um, renewal or discussion or, you know, that it may go to this director, it's kind of, you know, it was assigned to that person because they were available, basically, it seems like. Um, and they didn't, there was a position missing to send it to, you know, and I didn't write all that.
Francine has, in these towns, which ones, did any of these have trash billing?
Yeah, because I have questions about that.
Yeah. I'm just curious if any of them have trash billing, because it's always nice to be able to compare.
Right, though Holden Mass has trash billing, which I have a copy of their bill.
Right.
Okay, um, which is a Jane Doe bill, but anyway, she made one up because she can't give us.
I get you.
Right, so, right, the others, they do have it in their tax bill, but they are considering altering their structure. Because of, either they, um, what do you call that, like you just said, they go in-house with the services or they go to a vendor or a different vendor because of the R F P. So some of them are just like all over the map, I kind of had to do just definitive because they're kind of in limbo as well to say, when their contract is renewed, are they gonna, what's the cost to do this or that, you know, so, um.
Go ahead, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a couple of questions about this, did you compare us to towns that are actually like us? Because no events in these towns, they're not set up very similar to us, like Webster comes to mind.
Well, Webster is, I've talked to them before, Michelle.
Yeah.
Michelle works in Webster, I've been dealing with her, they use Munis, but they are town employees, they're not contracted. Um, they, I believe, still have Casella, they are.
I think, I think they're, I think they're individual carriers.
Right.
Do they do individual haulers?
I can't remember, I'd have to call Michelle back. But I know when I talked to Mark Becker in assessing, he can't stand Munis. So no matter who you talk to, if they use Munis, they can't stand. So that's a general consensus.
Okay, I have further questions, Mr. Chair. Um, so I've noticed it's been D P W and it's been limited, it's not the entire town's billing, billing, correct?
Some of them want to go that route, they just don't know how to do it, it seems like.
Have we heard from any communities that do all of their billing in one central location? Because none of these communities.
Holden, Holden Mass.
Holden does.
Holden does?
Yes.
Okay. What's their, what's their town population roughly?
Uh, I think, my brother lives there, I'd say fifteen to eighteen thou, same population.
Roughly same population, yes, okay.
Do you guys know, or?
But they have a whole utility.
Light department, yeah.
They have, they run their own light system.
Right, they have electric meters, solar, I was on the phone with her today, so they are more technologically advanced. And Putnam, Connecticut, for example, has, I went to town hall for some other purpose, but for a grant. They have the assessor's office, the tax collector's office and the water sewer department. Okay, water sewer is Munis, she can't stand it. She has same version as, you know, same thing as us that, and she was asking me, can you help me do this? Do you know how to do this? I'm on my day off, you know? So I looked at it and I said, what version do you have? And she tells me, I said, that's the problem, two different years' versions. They're not communicating effectively. Then her boss walked in and she went, zoop. So, she.
That's the problem.
Right, so she, she said, I can't talk. And that was the end of the conversation, basically, so.
Who does the trash in Worcester then, if it's not handled by the D P W?
I don't know, you might have told me the name, it's.
I know Worcester's a big city, so it's a different circumstance.
Right.
It's a, well, then that's, well, that's one of the options we're considering too, right?
Right, but they, it's on their tax bill for trash, because it's on.
Then you do it on your tax, yeah, because you have to put a lot onto the tax bill then.
Yeah.
Right, and I, I know my aunt isn't happy about it being on her tax bill, anyway. She rather people, when she uses her yellow bag, she, you know? She buys her yellow bag, I don't understand what the big problem is, we've had the yellow bags for twenty years, why can't we?
But you're still going to have a portion of that to need for by your taxes, according to what it sounded like, so either way, unless you go to a.
It's got to be a mixture of two to make the, make the, make the required payment.
On that, yes.
For trash.
But we're not looking at that, hopefully.
Yeah, so.
With the program on that.
Okay, so the utility billing module is the next thing, the billing for water, sewer, fire protection, miscellaneous fees. Other available sections within the U B module area are the setup of electrical meters, it's pre-existing, it's in the system. All you have to do is turn it on, probably pay for it, anyway.
Of course.
Yeah, so flat inventory is what I talked about with the health department. It could be used to inventory the recycle and trash toters.
Would that be reci, would that be the trash towers that are out in the public or the ones that we currently own?
We currently own and have it on public property. Like my, on my property, I have three black toters, three green toters. They're inventoried on an Excel spreadsheet in the health department.
So, so this would inventory, everybody's in town, not just the town owned ones? Okay, I thought they were redoing.
No, 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 public, whatever the town bought would be inventoried in Munis.
But they have, they have a list. Well, what I think is, because I know, um, I know Dan has talked, the town director, has talked about the fact that they have a list of all of the, of all of the trash towers in town, not just the town owned ones, everybody.
Right, right.
They're all numbered and stuff.
Right, they're all numbered, unfortunately, sometimes they're in the wrong place.
Sometimes they are, sometimes they're stolen.
So I talked to.
Like a dump to the woods or something.
Right, so I've got several examples of that, but anyway.
Yeah.
I talked to Maritza in the health department, asking her questions about the price and fees and all that. And she asked me why, so I explained, and she said, she looked back, she stood back in her chair and said, we wouldn't have to do it in Excel? You know, like her eyes got really big, I thought I gave her gold, you know? So then, so I asked her about fees and all that, blah, 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 she gave me that, she gave me that, what else do you need? Kind of, so, I'm just saying, so then I discussed as far as the pricing structure is really under Mr. Plasek's purview, you know, so confirmed that with him today. Um, so other things are work order management, which again, as I mentioned earlier, is used by the school department, just has to set it up, it's already active, you know? So, and I want to talk to the school department to see how it flows, how to use it, blah, blah. So the black backflow cross-connect management is to do with water and sewer. That is inventoried manually at the water department. They could, which they send me an Excel file, I have to redo it all so I could get it into my template to be able to import it into Munis to bill twice a year.
So just to clarify, work order management, we, we could easily expand that to do facilities management?
Correct, which is what, how the school is using it, it's facilities and I T for the schools. Um, so, we go to the next page. So the Southbridge residential accounts and utility, mind you, this is a huge spreadsheet of over, there are almost four thousand accounts, or thirty-eight oh two. That's, so what I did in Munis, they are sectioned by Charlton accounts, Sturbridge accounts, that you can code them by different, they call them districts, the other one is, um, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, you know, because that's a D E P requirement, okay? Which Tyler Tech didn't know that you could do it, I had to train them, anyway.
The other ones, we're paying money to do it.
Correct, and I said, and the thing.
Did you send them a bill for that training?
Yeah, I said, what are we paying you for? This is unacceptable, there are several cases that I've said.
Somebody higher than up than who you're dealing with.
Definitely.
Right, I, I need.
I've got a few other comments about that too.
Well, now Victor has, uh, super, super, super access, super or something.
Oh, he's a super admin?
Super admin or something like that, that he can see it, he wasn't before. So now he can see everybody's ticket. So he's come over to me and said, you sound really upset. She's not, you know, they keep transferring me from this case to, uh.
I can imagine why.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I don't blame you.
So out of these residential accounts, I've subtracted out the ones that are, um, have condos, you know, they have dumpsters there. Because in my listing, you can't separate those out, you gotta do them manually. So that gives us three thousand six hundred and seventy-six existing accounts that I could set up to bill the trash or M S four, whatever. Now, the trash, the lines on the bill are maxed at eight, there's only so much detail line. Right now, some of the accounts we're using five. So on a regular basis, so there is room to add. If we have to go beyond eight lines, we would have to, that would be a cost to Kelly and Ryan from the town, right, because they can't, it gets cut off.
Yeah.
Mind you, we only had four lines before and taxpayers were saying, where's my credit for my deduct meter? Well, because it wasn't set up that way with the printer to display all the data, it is now. Okay, so that's been fixed. So the next line, uh, the next page is what I came up with for codes so that I have a template and it's a, the pricing is not set in stone, it's not correct, the trash committee talked about a one family, two family, three family, four, et cetera.
Yep.
So in the codes in the system, one thousand, these are codes seven thousand that start with it, one thousand is water, two thousand is sewer, three thousand is fire protection, four thousand, I forgot what it is, five thousand is miscellaneous fees. So free for me, uh, I, six thousand is something, so that's why I chose seven thousand. So I've got seven thousand, eight thousand and nine thousand series that I can put different categories of A R codes. But I don't want to put these in here till I get a price, till I get it tested and through the state thing has to be fixed first.
Right.
The payment distribution, before I even touch this, I need to fix the state, the issue with the interest and demands and, okay?
This is really cool, for those who may not be seeing it at home, you know, you've got curbside one, curbside two family, three family, four family, five family, six family. Then you've got a number for demand fees, you've got a number for final curbside fee, prorated, curbside leans, total, you know, toters, toter numbers, I mean, you actually have the ability, you said, I mean, for, for a test, for a sample, this is incredible, like really, for what you put together.
Yeah.
As, and then there's numbers involved based on what was thrown around at.
Right, and some of these, the, the top portions, the one family through six family are guests. Down below, the lean fees and demand fees, that's Joanne. I confirmed that with the treasurer before she left to say, what are the fees for this, this and this?
Right.
Okay, and she looked at it and said, yep, 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 yep. Okay, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, kind of thing, so.
So this works with current system, this maybe, except that you gotta have that interest in lean thing.
Right, and I haven't tested this, I have to be able to build the codes, before I build this, I have to build the group code, the principal code, there's like five things, five tables I have to build before I build this.
Right.
But interesting, it looks great, I mean.
You know, so, um, and you can see the payment order are fives and twos because that twos would be the fees that need to be paid ahead of the curbside collection, like, you know what I mean, the, uh, the fee.
Right.
The, yeah, not the fee, but the usage.
Right.
Yeah.
So the principal water and principal sewer and usage on principal water and sewer is now last. It's, it's going to be payment options six, I think I put it as seven, so I had some room. So, but that's on my spreadsheet to fix. Okay, so, but again, I can't guess, I need Tyler Support, Kimberly Young or Helmut Mayer.
Right.
I cannot have, as I said in the other meeting, Joe Blow, I can't. Five, half hour, you're going to have to farm it up, because I cannot deal with that, I can't.
But are they really the right people if they just aren't?
Kimberly Young and?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, they're the ones that helped me after we converted to fix stuff that was wrong. They just didn't know about Massachusetts law.
So you were trained, so Munis or this, or the, the accounting people, I mean, the training people?
Well, it's, I heard a lot of banging on Will's desk, put it that way, as we were converting. But this guy Zach Joy was the first, no, there was a woman. She left the employment, then we had Zach Joy, he left employment with Tyler, then we had another person, they left with Tyler.
Was there the one who then they tried to say that we couldn't get trained because she had to have a baby first and we're like, so our training's over because we waited a few extra months because she had to have her baby?
Who said?
I remember.
I remember that, yes.
We had to wait for her to come in.
Right, but I'm still confused, we bought, the system is called Munis, that we bought not from Munis, right, from a vendor?
Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler, okay, just want to make sure that I, okay.
Tyler Technology Incorporated.
And Tyler Technology sells, sells us Munis and is supposed to be the support behind it.
Yes.
Those were the assumptions and the, uh, uh, what's, well, there's expectations, but those were the assumptions made based on everything that was done, was that there would be this full support.
Yeah.
And come to find out, a half million dollar program is partially no good two years later.
It doesn't actually upgrade, we've got terrible support.
And the support staff is bad.
The training was bad to start with.
This is an A G office situation, because there's a thing, I don't know if it covers municipalities or not, but there's a thing called the warranty of merchantability in Massachusetts, it's an actual law that exists that I actually used one time on something. Where, because people say, well, sorry, there's, there's a, there's a understanding that something you buy will last for a certain amount of time. So when they say, oh, your TV had a ninety day warranty, well, guess what, if you call the A G's office and you, you invoke this or you, you threaten people with this, they're like, your TV should have lasted more than three months. And they're going to make them either repair, you're going to get the choice, repair, repay or whatever. Now, granted, that's little stuff and this is a giant thing, but I don't see how it can be unequated that a municipality, or many of them, can be screwed. A half million dollars of taxpayer money to have something that is not viable within two years.
Totally agree.
So I don't think, I don't think it's not viable, I think.
It didn't even take state law into effect, it didn't even take Massachusetts law, they sold.
I don't know that it was, the question was asked, or maybe it was and it wasn't understood.
They were selling and trading in Massachusetts, by rights, they should have to know what, you know, is legal. But anyway, the point is, somebody, and it's usually not me, but somebody needs to question this because, and maybe they need to be threatened with that fact that you, you know, because there's something wrong with this. That's a whole nother story, but continue, Prince, I'm sorry.
So they were, for utility billing, there were cases that were open, this one particular, the lady, your first name is Peggy, has been pointing the finger, it's this software, it's that, it's this module, it's that module. So of course I said in the thing, she said, oh, it's utility billing. I said, they are the ones that set up this ticket with me on the phone. You know, they created the ticket with me, this is unacceptable.
Totally.
Don't keep bouncing me around. Face me. So she called, she sent me a thing, I apologized, she sent me another apology today that she's following up. So she follows up on it, she sends it to somebody else. This person's contacting me, and I said, where did Peggy go? She is the one that was assigned the ticket, now you're, now you're in the department. Right, it's a rubber ball, it's not.
No kidding.
You know, it's like. If you don't set up the ticket right, they, they bounce it somewhere else. So if you set up the ticket with the person on the phone, I was, ooh, hot. So.
Assuming you've done correctly, because you were on the phone with them.
I was on the phone with them, then she called me back and within ten minutes, she had my problem resolved. So why couldn't you do that earlier? Why couldn't you just call me? They have a bad habit of all this on them.
Has just gotten terrible.
Yes, so.
Across the board.
Yeah, it just, so, that was a situation, one of the situations I talked about at the last meeting. So, the other positive thing is the last page, Rayburn Consulting works with the water and sewer department, with our meters and their analysis. They analyzed, they gave us a presentation on October twelfth, twenty-two, in the highlights. So they compared our K V S software, Munis, what they call Tometra, which is really Munis and Tometra talking to each other, and their utility cloud at the water department. I want to say out of this whole thing, there was only one bill out of, since two thousand, since April seventh, two thousand twenty-one, that I took over that was misbilled, one, out of forty-seven hundred bills a quarter. April seventh, two thousand twenty-one that I took over that was misbilled. One out of forty-seven hundred bills a quarter. So.
That's good.
Yeah. The property has been, huh?
As opposed to Munis.
Yeah, thank you. But I just, I, you can't go back and fix it because the property's been sold and they paid it and it was a commercial account. So, oh, well. So, you know, it was, it was at conversion. Um, the other cases of billing, which had to do with our meter setups, were billing more in consumption or too much less because they were adding zeros at the end of the reading. This lady came in, she sat with me, she looked at a sheet of paper that came over from the water department. She said, there's the issue. There was a code on this thing that we were, both myself and Robin were giving information to the system that said, add two zeros here, add two zeros there. In effect, adding four zeros to the bill instead of only two. So we changed the process with the water department. That was huge. So it resulted in a lot of abatements in the beginning and that would be why. So this lady analyzed everything. She found a niche in her market because she knows Munis. So she is now working with Sturbridge and they have Munis. So I'm just saying, she is an asset. Her name is, uh, I'm gonna say her name wrong, but Ethan is the tech for her. Um, and Marie Ro, uh, Ronan.
That's okay.
Ronan or Noonan or, I can't, so.
Whoever she is, yes.
Right. So the water department paid out of their budget to do this analysis. And there are very few items left to fix, which really have to do more with on the water department's side of their utility cloud database. The other issues I found, no, I could identify stuff because I still have the KBS software. And the way they, they, Tyler Tech imported or converted our Tyler, our KBS stuff into Munis um, left a lot to be desired. And I will leave it at that. Okay?
I remember those meetings and I remember being sure.
Yes. I remember those.
So I can tell by looking at the data that different people have converted different data. So if you search for a street, Franklin Street, for example, Franklin Street is spelled out and there's an S T over here. So you've got Franklin Street, S T. Franklin Street. So you pull up Franklin, it doesn't come up. You need Franklin, S T R E E T. So I don't know. North Street or, North Street is spelled out or N Street. Or, you know, North Main, whatever. I had to go through and fix them all. As I find the errors, I fix the streets.
Right. System issues. I remember way back.
It's other than confidence to me.
And this only came up when we were doing a software for, um, Vision where we're putting in the utility, um.
We added the utility so that they're now in our Kama.
Right. So as I did that, I saw these issues of conversion.
Vision, no, it's mapping.
Yeah. So, so at least now when a real estate person calls, they can talk to either Rachel or Jasmine and say, yep, they connected. They're all public, connected to water and sewer. Or they're just septic or they're just water or, you know, so instead of looking into utility billing, they can answer the real estate person's question all in one Kama card. Okay, so. But for me, it helped me to go through it and say, oh, this is wrong in utility billing. This is not, it says residential, but it's commercial. Cause the code in Kama said a different code than what I had in Munis. Or, I don't know, ownership was, you know, which had nothing to do with their conversion. It was more the fact of the state code didn't match the Munis, the utility code or.
From your experience, would it make more sense to go back to KBS and get rid of this?
Can't. Now they don't, we're too far gone. And they were not doing upgrades. So that was the reason why we left. So, and I used to, I didn't deal with water and sewer.
Apparently so.
Right. I did not deal with water and sewer all that much. I did do address changes, deed changes, um, finals, weekly billing, things like that. I didn't do much quarterly billing, uh, only the time that Mark was out in the hospital.
Right.
For six months, which was, I don't even wanna go down that memory lane. So, so.
So it would sound like from all of this, that the ability to use the existing system with the right software exists. Yes, is that, did I, am I getting?
Updated, the updated software.
The updated software, which somebody should, um, should call them on the carpet on and check with them.
Yeah, how much is that gonna cost?
And how long will it take them to train?
Install the update and train the staff and.
I bet that update's.
Well, the update is not, each, each update is a little bit. It's, there's some tweaks and they give you a new manual, which is how I found the trash. The trash is mentioned in two thousand twenty-one's version, not in two thousand nineteen. So therefore tells me they weren't even considering it in two thousand nineteen's version, which is what we have. But the way they were doing it was a flat fee. And a flat fee in Munis means it goes away. It's a one-time miscellaneous charge. Goes away. It's a miscellaneous charge. You know, it's not a fixed
Right.
recurring charge. The way I've got it set up on my spreadsheet is a recurring base charge. So that every quarter that will be charged. Once, once the amount is decided upon.
Do they have a more, more up to date version? I mean, by now it's twenty twenty-three, obviously. Right now, obviously it's twenty twenty-three. Are they having a version that's gonna come out that we might actually make more sense to get to rather than skip, just skip over the middle man?
Well, that's what they did Tyler cashiering to me. We were, when we were both in two thousand eighteen, Munis and Tyler cashiering, some of these problems didn't exist. There were others that had, you know, but then we went to two thousand nineteen and Tyler cashiering was behind. They had started the problem. Then now Tyler cashiering is in two thousand twenty-one, Munis is in nineteen. So there are more problems.
Of course.
So I use the analogy, Munis is in Berkshire County. Tyler cashiering is in Suffolk County.
Great.
They both need to be in Worcester County, driving down the same road, going the same direction. Cause right now they're going on two different one-way streets. And they're hitting tra, they're hitting heavy traffic. You know, like they can't.
I don't know why we're not using somebody who knows.
It's going the same direction, crashing.
Right, exactly.
Maybe tell us that it was gonna cost us in two years.
Yeah, that's something they included.
To me, that's, that's wrong.
Because it's, it's, it's kind of understandable that like, when you pay for bit, like you said, a half million dollars for conversion, you get the updates. At least the next ten years, I would think, we included.
We always needed IT updates.
Right. I get that there's gonna be changes and that there may be new parts of the system that need to be added and I get that, but the idea that we would change, that we would have to pay for an increased cost for a version that's two years old is ridiculous.
I'm curious to see the contract and for us to maybe review the contract and see when it's up again.
Yep. We could be stricter.
It just seems that there's a lot of.
I think, I think I have a copy of the contract somewhere in my files.
The fact that they didn't have us set up properly to begin with, with Munis, with, with Massachusetts law. Set us up for disaster to start, that to me is, is a really gross negligence.
It's egregious.
And again, those are questions to talk with the TM about when it comes to the lead side of it. I mean, I would, I would strongly think the town should.
I mean, kudos to, you know, Will Kenoyer and myself were doing the conversion. Mark General was at the counter assisting customers on the phone. It was very hectic on the headsets because there's COVID and everything else. But at points I was very stressed about it. And then when I went into Will's office and he was on the phone with them and he says, that does not make sense. You know, like this, right?
Will is even like, that makes no sense.
That makes no sense to me. Common sense will do. And I, I was like, oh my God. You know, his face was beet red.
You're gonna jump in if I tell them.
So I, I said, okay, let me turn around and I left. And then, you know, at one point, Melissa Zawalski is texting Will on his cell phone. Don't do it. Don't accept it. They won't fix it. So he didn't respond. So she calls me on my phone.
Yeah.
And says, did Will get my text? What text? So I said to him, read your cell phone. Melissa's texting you, you know? And he went, yeah. So they go through all that and even explain with me on the phone, they're suggesting this or that. I said, that's just another workaround.
Oh, yeah.
You know? So I said, well, I need a break. Couldn't, you know, so.
Rachel, Rachel wanted to say something for a while.
Which I forgot now because there's so many points I wanted to cover.
I'm sure. It is a little crazy.
One thing I think in defense of Munis, not that I like Munis at all, um, but they relied heavily upon the communities to test and approve as they build. Cause every, what I'm finding is every community does things different in their databases. So they're really custom-built programs. And I think that some of this may have been just things you don't know, you, you don't figure out until you run into it.
Right.
And in the testing phase, you just don't know. And unfortunately, at that point, you've accepted the program and you're kinda stuck with it. And I think a lot of the issues that we have are because of that. It just wasn't discovered. Not enough testing occurred or was accepted too soon. Um, because even just that simple bridge upgrade I had done, I had to test thoroughly because once I accepted it, that was it. It was mine.
And, and I, I get what you're saying. If there's a new, if, if there's a new piece, if they introduced a new, brand new component to billing. But the idea that we, that even just to upgrade the current software.
That, that was the other point I wanted to hit was that, um, multiple partners that were equal with cashiering. Once we hit this level, we really shouldn't need to upgrade it all the time. There's towns that are like at Munis eight, you know, or two thousand eight. I mean, like really old versions. Some are not even online versions. They still function properly.
Oh, yeah.
We're not functioning proper because we're not equal, the two programs, the cashiering and Munis.
So why is we upgrade to Tyler without considering upgrading Munis first?
What happened with, because I wasn't involved in that part.
I have recommendations from the company that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what.
And then, you know, I would again, I would pay him a five, a five hundred thousand dollar contract. I would expect the company to be like, oh, you're upgrading your Tyler to twenty, year twenty-one. You're gonna have to upgrade Munis. Otherwise it's not gonna work properly. I would expect that to be like
Especially since it's the same company.
Common sense to explain to a customer.
Not, not to a salesperson.
Well, and I think a lot of it too is that every community has different levels that they may not even know. That most people don't work together until it's tested and where the guinea pigs. And Munis is fairly new to this whole encompassing, um, every department. Like it started off, I think, maybe just in accounting and then it's expanded. And then of course you get bugs. Patches though should be available to us. That, you know, the program I was using, um, Vadar and Dairy, every time there's a patch, no charge. They patched, you know, I had to dial in, I had to get it from their website, but it uploaded whatever patches they had for fixes, bugs, that kind of stuff. Bl edges that they came across. So that I.
Well, that should be there.
Should be included, um, one hundred percent. But, um, I think, I think Printhee did a fantastic job. I just wanted to say, um, she had a lot of great information.
Yes, definitely.
Annie is supposed to be getting pricing for outsourcing on the other end. So if you connect with her, are there any other action plans you guys would like for next meeting? See, like to see.
I, I personally, I would, I, I wanna take time to review this information. We got a lot of information I wanna review. I would also, like I said, I want this presentation sent out to the entire council. I'm sure the man, the interim manager has it. Uh, if not, make sure they have it.
I expected him. I finished it today, you know, one hour.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I'm not saying that that's the problem. I'm saying I just like it forwarded to everybody. So we're all on the same page. We can all review this information. Cause this is a plethora of information.
I would need the list of Munis because I don't have them.
Yeah, well, send them, send them to Hannah. She can send.
Yeah, send them to the manager's office and she'll take care of it. Yeah.
So the other thing I wanted to say, which I forgot, was the, not the updates, but the, um, the patches. Those are automatically done. That's where we have two thousand one point twenty-two. That's service pack twenty-two. So when you go to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, it's automatically done. It's the year, the base structure of the, which all the files are, there's a lot more to it, as Victor was explaining to me, which I kinda.
They didn't complete it.
But two thousand nineteen.
He doesn't have access or authority to approve the upgrade. That is in Karen Harney's authority at the moment and she's leaving. That's what I was told.
So it needs to be, so it needs to be given to Victor.
And he's working on that to get that permission set transferred to him.
That makes sense.
So, you know, with people leaving, their duties that are not shifted to where they belong to that person to take the wings and fly with it.
You, you mentioned earlier that two thousand nineteen's no longer supported. What does that mean? Cause I know that means different things for different companies.
I don't know. That's what Victor told me, that it's, it's not supported.
Providing updates, not providing trade, like what does that mean? It's not supported.
Well, I can call and get support, but to me, the support is not any different than it was before when we were not, you know what I mean? When it was not old, because it's always been crappy, to be honest, you know? So.
There were a lot of problems in that first year. So I, there was a lot of things that were not getting completed. It would come to meetings and we would, we would say, why? Who's, who's that? And we, and we'd kinda look around at the department people, you know, cause that, it's not our job as, at the time as a council.
You're right.
Right.
To, to direct anything, but it was like, well, why not? Why aren't we, why isn't this town? And again, it was usually a TM, TM responsibility to make sure that, you know, that things are getting done.
So we did pay, uh, GL's first, payroll second. Six months later, we did payroll. Then another six or twelve months, we did taxes. That was a horror show. Horror show, horror show, horror show. Um, for real estate, personal property and motor vehicle. Um, so we had five days with the guy from import. He spent four days with, I was supposed to get a full day. He spent four and a half days with the collector's office. I only got three and a half hours with the guy going, maybe it's here. No, let me try here. I think they put it here.
Into the, into the heads of the company. I told him.
Well, they did. The guy was removed from, the guy was removed from the project. That's a big deal. It's too late now. We already accepted it. It's, you know, he's removed after. He should have been removed the first day.
Yes, he should have been.
No, you know, not five days later, but.
Well, I think, I think I'd like to hear from IT, just IT's thoughts, but I also would like to see if you, you mentioned you have, um, the contract. I'd like to see the contract.
Yeah.
The other thing that, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think Jasmine had a good idea about the contract and also if you can get the minutes of that meeting, cause I do remember that meeting. Cause Denise asked me questions.
We were sitting here doing it.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus, but, um, there was a staff person who was not here. I, I think her name was Mindy or something. She was pushing for it.
She was the collector, yeah.
And then she left. And she was also pushing for keys. I mean, for the, to get rid of the keys. And then she left.
This is true.
And she was like, I'm out of here now.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't get that. And I don't know why you guys were so fast to accept that program and.
Yeah.
And I think it was mainly, it was mainly because KBS was no longer supported.
Everyone was accepting of that. Oh, well, our, our training got cut short because she was on, because I, and I remember, I'm sorry. Don't mean to be callous, but. I don't, you know, I don't care you had a pregnant.
Somebody else has stepped up to do it.
Somebody needed to step up. What was that?
Like, I don't, I'm glad she's on medical leave for her child. That's wonderful. But like, that doesn't mean we don't get the training we need to do our jobs. Like.
Who was for payroll? If you don't remember, do you remember who?
That wasn't our thing. It was her.
It was, it was their trading person.
Person was pregnant or something.
Yeah, their trading person was out for like six months and we had nobody.
They told us that we had to be.
Oh, that's the tax person originally. Yes, that's why we got the guy with no knowledge. That's why we got the guy that was saying, it's up there.
And we're, we're not supposed to.
But yeah, no, I, I agree with Counselor Rivas. So I think we need some more information. I would like to have some input from the interim manager as well, once he's had the time to review this video and review the, the presentation. Um, I, I think we, I think this is, there's a lot of good information here and I thank you for complying with this.
And I think the interim town manager, correct me if I'm wrong, um, was in Sturbridge at one point. And Sturbridge has Munis two thousand eleven.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So there, and he's, he was, he was. I'm just saying that he has exposure to Munis.
Yes, he does.
And it's the old version. And the IT person, when I talked to them, the IT person said, the finance person, I don't know, it's wicked old. We have no support because it's not supported. It's our own, we're stuck with it, basically.
That's all.
It, it works, but it's all a bunch of workarounds and it's a bunch of Excel spreadsheets and it, the same we're doing now. I'm doing now. You know, there's a lot of Excel spreadsheets that there's no need for if the software worked and grabbed the correct information and to tell me every time I called that it's an extra fee to write a new report. And if you don't know Crystal, Crystal Report Writer, you gotta pay extra. Cause you can write your own reports.
Of course.
If you know Crystal Report Writer. You know, so it's so bad that in the surveys, they send you surveys. I kept saying the person was, you know, helpful, know that. Could, they could be trained a little bit better or whatever. I said, stop sending surveys and hire more staff. So, cause they'd send me the same ticket to survey on their company stuff and another survey for outside vendor. So I kept saying it. I don't get surveys anymore. I'm off the list. Cause they know what my answer will be. And then when I talked to somebody in utility billing, cause that's what my surveys were, cause they had told me it's a half hour time limit before.
Yeah.
So I said, you know, I know I only have a half hour. He says, no, not anymore. We have more staff. Somebody kept complaining.
You got thirty-five minutes now.
So they, they got word that somebody was complaining. They didn't know who, but.
Thank you so much for this information. This was very, very helpful.
I have one question for me. I have one question for me, I want to know. Francine, if you're saying that they're telling you things are outdated or, and one doesn't gel, and all that, has, has this been brought to some higher power that no longer exists here? But has some higher power, have you brought this concern forward to say, "We might need a half million dollars again?"
I, it's, how should I say this?
It's wrong.
The previous assessor was the person I went to, and, not, you know, but he was frustrated enough with IT. Then, we went through all this conversion, and now he's retiring, Mark was retiring August thirty-first. So as a moot point, we were having too much of a turnover, I had to get from day one to day two, I couldn't, you know.
But that's not the end, that, they're not the, they're not it.
So if, if, if the assessor wasn't available.
I couldn't go above him, basically, and that's what I was told, he was my boss, I had no opinion to validate.
That's not proper chain of command, though, if you don't get a satisfactory answer, then you have the right to go to the internet.
I had, I had to work for him, I had to work for him.
I used to tell Chris Clark that your department heads should always be aware that if I walk in at any moment and wonder what they're doing and ask questions to them. And he would say, "Well, that's micromanaging," I said, "No, it's not, that's accountability, and they should know that, not that you're going to do that, but they should know that, that's management." You have, your staff, your people have to know that somebody is looking out, somebody might just be asking questions, like, you know, that's bad.
And the communication has to go both directions.
It does, it does.
It doesn't have to be blocked here.
Right, because you can block.
It did, to a point.
To a point.
To a point, but.
Key, key issues are not getting to the people who can fix them, that's, that's a problem.
As the IT, he had, as the IT manager and as the assessor, he had more.
Right, but as a taxpayer, I'm now finding out, and others, that we may be beholding to a quarter million, or it could be anything. Because it was last time, it was four hundred thousand or so, wasn't it?
Yeah, four hundred thousand, I imagine it wouldn't be as much, because we're not converting from one software to another, I would hope, but.
Yeah, I can't go through that again, I can't.
So I don't know.
I think Victor has started looking into that cost, so I, I think that's something we should have to, to upgrade that one last element.
So.
Are there, are there, are there, are there, are there other softwares that do the same kind of thing, that are less, less cumbersome and less?
Well, but, well, that's for utility billing, or is that?
For, for, all of the stuff, you, you, I mean, all of the stuff you've been telling us for the last hour now, is frustration on top of frustration. And it's not just your department, it's all over the place.
Right.
So, that tells me that the problem is the Munis software itself.
Or the lack of training to use it.
The lack of training.
Lack of training, to me, and follow.
The software, the feed, the feedback you get from the company are all atrociously bad.
So I can.
Plain English, they're terrible. Is there something else out there that we should be seriously looking at, say, "To hell with you people, we're done with you, we're going to sue you."
Okay, well, let's, let's keep it on the agenda items to share. The agenda item is centralized billing, let's try to keep it to that, because we're kind of getting off topic.
We've kind of got off topic a while ago.
Yeah, and I think we should try to wrap it back in. Yeah, this is, we're debating.
Thank you, Francine, that was a great presentation.
Yes, thank you very much, thank you very much.
I know it's kind of depressing, but imagine writing it.
No, I appreciate your, your advice, good.
Oh, I have a suggestion too, just one thing, because I see, you know, you, like, a half dozen or eight, whatever, towns, right? When I was doing a research survey, just as a counselor for DBW stuff, about who, who did what for plowing and stuff, I just called towns myself. And said, "Hey, what's your overtime this year, can you talk to me about what you, when you call people in for, you know, the extra at night?" I just had like a checklist of questions, the same ones, and people were so nice to ask.
Oh, they were, they are, absolutely.
I'm just saying, if any of us have any resources to ask questions to other communities, write it down, sort of like when I came to council once, and had like ten towns that paid my fee. You know, I mean, just, that was a quickie on the line, but, I'm just saying, it's not bad to get that documentation, if you can get it.
So, I, I, I think the best course of that, I think we kind of laid out what we were wanting and what information we're needing, so.
Probably there could be more.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm not disagree, I'm saying for our continued discussion, I think it would be best to have this just on the next agenda, have it be continuously brought up.
Oh, yeah.
And, because I, I don't think there's honestly anything else we can discuss tonight, and we've got a lot of information, yeah.
So, the, um, the other question is, because we combined town council and this meeting, so there's a trash committee meeting in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Um, so I don't know if it would behoove us, because trash is so close, especially once we get the RFPs in, to have, you know, a meeting of the joint, joint meeting of both?
Well, I think the final RFP is not going to be approved until April third, right? So, yeah, I'm fine with having discussion beforehand, because this is such an important thing to keep talking about and get more insight on. Um, yeah, I think even independent of what trash does, I think this is a good discussion for us to be having around centralized billing.
Yeah.
So, Francine, the, the reason it's called a joint meeting of the general government subcommittee, and it, and it actually should be slightly worth it. According to AG, it has to do with a long time ago, when, um, counselors always attended meetings and spoke up, and there were a lot of, uh, uh, open meeting law violation, things that, not for us. But, well, it should have been technically, other communities that were on the books in terms of people believing that counselors were speaking on matters that they would be addressing at a council meeting. That they were speaking as, quote, a citizen, or whatever, or, um, and it was not, that's not legal to do that. You're not supposed to be acting on, in your capacity as a, you should sit in the audience, say nothing. If you want to discuss something, then you got to let the public know that you're there discussing something, so, at least, at least that was my. So I presented to the AG's office at the time, Jonathan Sclarsic, who I was dealing with at the time, I said, "Well, what if we call it a joint meeting in some way? What if we do this?" And it was, you know, it's supposed to be a, a jo, a meeting, a, a joint meeting of the general government subcommittee.
Antec.
And the town council, or something, that was supposed to be, that says antec, it's supposed to be slightly different than this, but it was, this is close, and no one's ever said anything. And that basically, and of course, in our rules, we say, only those members of the committee will be voting.
Yeah.
You know, but members of council may be present and be speaking, and that's where the AG's office let us, um, you know, not be invited, like, we, we kind of, that was the appeasement. To make sure people realize that we were being very transparent with the community, that, um, counselors are not supposed to be acting on their manner as a counselor. They're supposed to be acting as their manner as a person, technically, although they're never people, they're always elected officials.
Right.
So if you call it two meetings, it was okay, it to combine me, or, a meeting of this and a meeting of that, that's what it's supposed to be.
Right, so that, that makes sense, the comment I had from somebody, they were in the back of the room, and somebody had said, "You go to those meetings, who so-and-so, you know, that said this at a meeting." And I said who it was, "Well, he's a town counselor, why didn't he record, why didn't he say he was a town counselor?"
Because it's already on the agenda as a joint meeting of the both, it's a subcommittee meeting, but it's a joint meeting of both to cover that.
Right, I didn't know how to explain it, I said, "Call the town manager's office," because I don't know.
It is a formality, yeah.
You know, so, it's a formality, but.
But it's a legal thing, because it's, it's more than, quote, our formality.
You are correct, you are correct.
It is, it is something that.
It coins open meeting law.
A lot of discussions were fostered in terms of, um, because there was a lot of allegations of open meeting law, all kinds of things back then, and I was trying to address the fees and not the eyes.
Yeah.
And that's where that came from, so, but in your, to your point, if the trash committee is meeting, and you're trying to encourage, you know, and there's going to be a quorum of counselors there. It would behoove you to state it as a meeting of the blank and a meeting of the town council, whatever. And maybe put that little asterisk, have somebody put the asterisk on the agenda that says, council members will be here, but they are not participating as, you know, in.
As voting members.
As voting members, okay.
Something like that.
In fact, I, you mentioning that, maybe, just made me realize that that's not stated on the agenda.
Right.
And it may be, I mean, they did instruct us to, to do it on as much as, you know, as possible, because we in Southbridge tend to act differently than a number of other communities, I was told back in those days, you know, that.
We still do.
And you weren't supposed to.
Actually, we just approved the new rules, putting those, those language officially into the rules, so, yeah, you're right.
Should have already been in there.
It was, it was.
It was, it was updated and changed.
Supposed to be there, but.
Yeah, I was trying to figure, I didn't read it to figure out what, I mean, I read what it said, but I didn't know what was wrong.
So, before we leave, the, the thing with me being able to fix the thing that is a state violation, I do need to work with those two people.
Yeah.
So, do you have, you know, through Rachel, or however this process goes, because the quote is expired, we need another quote. Now, the quote being the training that can occur, can email the person, get a new quote, it's only good for six months, it has to be signed by, voted, signed by town manager. If we do not use all of the sessions, we would not be billed. Now, Rachel had said that Karen found or had.
There's an account for stuff.
For training and stuff?
I don't know what it's called, I need, when I needed the data bridge, she said there were some available funds, but I don't know what exactly.
Yeah, we can't, we, I mean, we can't take action, because it wasn't put on here that we were taking.
And you really should talk to the town.
Emotion, and it was no.
That would have to be some way, have to get it before.
You would have to come back through subcommittee again and go through, and get approved.
Unless it was emergency wise, if you talk to the chair, if this is something, I'm sorry, I, I, subcommittee is important, but when it's something to, that is already being violated, so to speak, in some way, shape, or form, I would find that to be an emergency situation.
Well, yeah, but it still has to be approved by the council anyway.
You have to, yes, 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 I agree, one hundred percent.
But if we were to get a quote, and then bring that quote.
Oh, you can get a quote, anybody can get a quote and come in and make a recommendation either way.
All right, that's what I'm saying, because the quote is not expired.
As long as the quote doesn't cost money to get, right?
Well, compared to the, how, how much was the last quote?
It was around five grand, right?
Okay, so that, that just.
It was, it was over six.
Was it six?
Well, as long as it's under ten, you have to, you, you don't have to like go to bit.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, for, for her to do the fix that she needs to do, there may be funds available in, like, a dedicated account for me, that's something Karen would know.
Oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
But that's kind of a critical issue we need to, we need to start working on.
And, and, of course.
I would just go back to the TM.
Yeah, with an actual motion and recommendation, yeah.
I mean, doing that may just, that may just be a simple transfer.
This is from April twenty-sixth.
It is.
That probably, yeah, I don't think we would necessarily.
Quote was five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
So it's probably close to like six and a half grand, or something like that, with inflation, if you were to.
And this was, to implement thirty-two hours remote in project management for, but, that's their normal, so, I asked for four days, I think. Five, I don't know.
Because that would be great to use, if we did do the central billing and hired staff.
Okay.
To use that at that time, and use other funds to fix the problem that we have ongoing right now currently.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because regardless, I need to be able to work with them to fix water and sewer, whether we do trash or not, I need their assistance to do it. Because I can't deal with Peggy.
Okay, another topic, that's another.
The next item is adjournment.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to make a request, um, I know, um, Councillor Kenny wanted something brought up to the general government's committee for review.
What's that?
That was a policy change for, for useful life.
They, it got, no, it got postponed, and we never brought it back up again.
I did read that.
We postponed it at the last meeting, because we wanted more information, we got that email back from Karen, saying she wanted to keep it at the conservative number of three, instead of raising it to five, remember that?
Oh, yes.
We need to have that discussion again, so maybe on the next gen gov meeting.
Yeah.
Well, Karen told me she did not send that email, so I don't know what's going on.
Well, because I literally got, she sent an email, literally, signed by her, so who else went on her email and sent an email?
She said she did not send that.
Forwarded it, right?
I don't recall seeing it, so.
I'll forward it to you, because.
We've already discussed it twice in our capital planning, and both times we recommended.
Okay.
Whenever you can get that out, I'd appreciate it.
Right, okay.
All right, all right, then, then now I'll move to a turn, Mr. Chair. Oh, you already made the most, I'll second, I'll second.
All those are favorites, yeah, let's go. Let's go.